Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council. And without objection, I would ask that we suspend the rules to provide this council meeting be held via video and telephone conferencing in accordance with the Michigan Open Meetings Act as amended on October sixteenth, two thousand and twenty, and that participation of no less than four council members on this video and teleconference constitutes a quorum for the purposes of conducting this meeting. This procedure that we are using tonight is a result of the ongoing and current pandemic, which a state and local emergency has been declared, is intended to promote the health and safety of the members of the public, city staff, and the city council, which is the goal expressed in the order issued by Michigan, the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services on November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty. Additionally, public comment, comment on any agenda item and participation during communications from citizens will be provided via Zoom teleconference at the following telephone numbers, nine two nine, two zero five, six zero nine nine. When prompted, residents should enter the following meeting number, nine two three, nine four zero five, eight nine three two, and press pound. You do not need to enter a passcode. Those wishing to speak on an agenda item and or communications from citizens will be prompted to press nine at the appropriate time to indicate a desire to speak and allow me to recognize you. Please be advised that there could be delays based on the number of calls received. Procedurally, in order to facilitate an orderly meeting by video and teleconferencing, I ask that if any of my colleagues want to floor to make us make or second a motion, please unmute yourself and ask for the floor. This will allow me to identify you. In case of two members speaking, uh, the chair, myself, will make the call. Also, council members are reminded to have their devices on mute when not talking to limit interference and refrain from watching the meeting online due to the slight broadcast delay. All votes of the council tonight will be taken by roll call vote conducted by the city clerk. Is there any objection to proceeding the manner that I've outlined? Hearing no objection, I will recite the pledge of allegiance on behalf of the city council so that it can be heard clearly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Riska, will you please unmute yourself and proceed by reciting the invocation?
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Riska. May we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor?
Here.
Mrs. Saroski?
Here.
Mrs. Kosky?
Participating.
Mr. Radke?
Here.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Participating.
Mr. Yenaz?
Participating.
Mrs. Yerko?
Participating.
Thank you, council. We now need approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a, is there a motion?
Ms. Camer?
Mrs. Kosky, please proceed.
Move to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Mayor Taylor?
Do you support the motion, Councilwoman Zarco?
Support.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oh, sorry, 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 sorry. We gotta do a roll call vote.
Yeah.
Old habits. Alright, uh, it's been moved and seconded. Ms. Riska, can we please have a roll call vote?
Mr. Radke?
Yes.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Saroski?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Yenaz?
Yes.
Mrs. Yerko?
Yes.
Mrs. Kosky?
Yes.
Thank you, council. A motion to approve the agenda passes. Next item on our agenda tonight is a report from our city manager, Mark Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool?
Thank you, mayor. I have a couple of items in my report. First, let me begin with, uh, when I mentioned at our last meeting, but for those who might have missed it, it's certainly a timely item. Uh, leaf collection season has been extended, uh, one week through December eleventh. The city will therefore begin to proactively enforce the ordinance, which requires removal of leaves from yards. Now, obviously with the snow on the ground right now, uh, you'll, you'll have a day or two, but the weather looks good the rest of the week and throughout the weekend, it's supposed to be sunny and dry. Uh, so this will be the last week and weekend to get them collected. And, uh, the good news is the vast majority of our, uh, community and residents comply with this ordinance. And in this year in particular, it seems like we have really good compliance citywide. Uh, but for those of you who just haven't had a chance to get out, please, uh, do all that you can to get out and get them collected uh, this week. It's really important to ensure proper street drainage and to avoid ponding, flooding during the fall and icing during the winter and creating unsafe conditions. So, uh, if anyone needs help for, uh, financial reasons or, uh, there's mobility limitations in the household, uh, we have a volunteer corps that can help out. So please contact the city in the next couple of days and we'll get you hooked up with some help. And we really appreciate everyone's cooperation. Um, also, I wanted to mention, uh, just briefly on the COVID, uh, situation is, as most know, the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services order continues, uh, until December eighth. Uh, so, so that means that, uh, we, well, I should say that it continues to the eighth, but I think, you know, the, the rumor is that, that it could be extended. Uh, we don't know for certain, but we have to uh, plan for the worst and hope for the best. What that means is our December fifteenth meeting will have to be, uh, on Zoom once again. Uh, but we're looking forward to getting back in, in-person meetings on January fifth. And, and, uh, hopefully, you know, there's light at the end of the tunnel. The vaccine programs, as everyone has heard, have been widely publicized on the news. Uh, the county is working diligently, uh, to begin the distribution process. Uh, so that will be well underway, at least the first phase by January fifth, when we come back, uh, to in-person meetings. And, uh, we're planning for, in conjunction with the county and other stakeholders, uh, the max, the mass vaccination, which is, uh, expected to occur March, April, May, June. Uh, so we're, we're doing all that we can on the local level to coordinate with our partner, partners at, at the county and, uh, in, in, in compliance with the state plan. So there's a lot of activity going on. Uh, what, what's beneficial for Sterling Heights is we have a full-service fire department. All, uh, one hundred of our firefighters are, are certified paramedics, advanced life support paramedics. Uh, so there's no question that they will be involved in one way, shape, or form in some of the vaccination processes as they, uh, start to get solidified over the ensuing months. Uh, so Sterling Heights is well positioned to partner, uh, with our, uh, stakeholders at the county level and state, at state level. Not to mention, uh, Troy Beaumont, Henry Ford, and some of our other, uh, healthcare center partners. So much more to come on that topic, uh, but I did want everyone to, uh, be reminded that on December fifteenth, we'll be back in a Zoom meeting and we look forward to seeing everyone in person on January fifth. And, um, mayor, uh, now that we're, we're, uh, headed in, in just the final days of our road construction season with nineteen mile wrapping up, uh, uh, very soon, I thought it was appropriate for the city engineer, uh, to give an update on behalf of his team, uh, who have really done just, uh, I think, a miraculous job this, uh, construction season, getting all of our projects done from our neighborhood road projects to, uh, some of the major road projects, and not to mention, uh, significant sidewalk completions too. So, uh, Brent Baschaw is with us this evening and he's gonna give us a, an update on the projects and, and, uh, mention some of them that are, uh, one in particular that's gonna spill over into next year. So if you don't mind, I'd like to introduce Brent Baschaw.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpool, and good evening, Mayor Taylor, members of council, and, uh, those watching in the audience, in the virtual audience. Um, I'm gonna share my screen first of all, um, start with a project that we completed, uh, in two thousand and twenty. And this was actually our first project off the books was, uh, the completion of eighteen mile road sidewalk and pedestrian safety improvements on this stretch of road as well. And this was on eighteen mile road between Mound Road and Van Dyke Avenue. Uh, the background is, um, on the south side eighteen mile road, uh, we had a significant amount of sidewalk gaps. So that's highlighted in orange, uh, on this, on the screen below. In front of industrial metal coatings, KBC Tools, Utica Community Schools, uh, bus garage, um, Ford Motor Company owned a parcel in there too. We're crossing Conrail, Conrail, ITC, and then also Australian Heights DPW. So, uh, significant amount of sidewalk gaps and it's been in the city's long-term goal to complete this sidewalk gap, um, because it's a great connectivity from the residential sets, um, parcel, residential properties on the west side of Mound, uh, to connect to Van Dyke and the parks and, uh, in, in parcel, in areas to the east. Um, now, this was accelerated because we started getting calls, um, in the winter about safety. Um, the calls started coming in and they came in pretty rapidly and we got a couple, uh, really, really great feedback from, um, an employee at Ford and UCS two, really highlighting the troubles they see and what, and what they saw was pedestrians early morning, late at night, walking on the shoulders of eighteen mile road. Uh, you can see it's not very well lit in these yellow circles. I actually have pedestrians in them. Um, so PD helped us soon as we were aware of the problem. PD helped us by going out monitoring, uh, really at all, at all hours of the morning and night to see what kind of pedestrian activity was out there. Um, and this is what we're found, extremely dangerous situations. Like I said, pedestrians walking on the shoulder and not very well illuminated, um, roadway. Um, we immediately, and Pete, we immediately installed temporary measures. PD handed out actually, um, safety, uh, safety vest to the pedestrians so they can be seen while they're walking. Um, and we also put some temporary measures, but we knew permanent measures needed to be installed. So in two thousand and twenty, in the spring of two thousand and twenty, like I said, first project off the books, we installed three thousand feet of sidewalk gap and that's highlighted below, um, with the blue lines and in the, and we also installed, um, uh, well, part of the install, installation was the crossing of the railroad, um, improvements to the bridge over the Plum Brook drain. And also lastly, and what occurred later this fall was the installation of the street lightings and all these, uh, little orange, um, segments kinda highlight the location of the streetlights. Uh, so what you see here is the finished product, uh, starting with the picture on the left is in front of KBC Tools, which shows a new street light pole, uh, with LED head. Um, this, the second picture over shows, uh, cyclists using the new sidewalk. Um, this picture was actually in front of industrial metal coating. Uh, another picture is it, this illuminated, uh, this lumen that was put on an arm in front of UCS, uh, so that lit up that part of the project and, uh, let, and they also the sidewalk in the area. And it also provided a benefit to UCS to have, uh, their driver approach illuminated. There's a lot of bus traffic that comes in and out of that driver approach. Um, the last picture on the right shows the sidewalk crossing the Con, Conrail tracks. Um, and this was installed actually by Conrail. It took a lot of coordination to get that installed. Um, so where you see the arm that comes down and the SUV in the picture, the pedestrians were, were walking right between those two items and now they have a sidewalk to walk on, um, behind. So these pictures that just populated show the area at night. In the pictures I showed before, uh, with the pedestrian circle that you could barely see is actually taken from the same location as this picture on the right. And you see the sidewalk behind the poles in the well-illuminated roadway. Uh, so like I said, the project was really facilitated and really became urgent because of a safety issue. Uh, but this also was in the long-term plan, uh, to provide not, a non-motorized improvement to the roadway. So what we have now is a completed sidewalk from Dequinder Road all the way to the city center that ties into the Iron Bell Trail, the HMA Trail, the Dodge Park System, um, the, the park network in there, and, um, you could actually go down all the way to Metro Park. So it was a great tie-in for the residential neighborhood, uh, on the west side of the city can traverse, uh, whether it's cyclists, uh, runners, uh, pedestrians, traverses eighteen mile road now, uh, clear on sidewalk to Mound Road to Van Dyke uh, for commercial or, um, carry on to the park system as noted. Uh, collaboration, I'll just take a minute to thank our partners, and we had many partners in this project. Uh, Ford owned the parcel with the tension pond. We did not have property to put the sidewalk in there, so we had to give an easement acquisition. Uh, they worked fantastic with us. Uh, DTE installed the lighting for us through contract. Uh, Conrail, it's historically been tough to deal with, uh, sometimes, um, was really outstanding with this project. Um, took a lot of collaboration, but they installed, um, their crossing, um, very quickly. Um, Utica Community Schools, uh, they helped notify us of the problem, um, but also provided us property via easement to install the sidewalk. Uh, ITC Corridor owns a big parcel of land east of the railroad who helped us and, uh, corporate partners, KBC Tools and Industrial Metal Coating, uh, both were very helpful and, uh, very uh, 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 very much like to see this project go in, um, dedicated us easements as well. Um, Com County worked with us to get the sidewalk, uh, safely onto the bridge. And, um, last but not least, I really need to thank our legal team. Um, Clark Andrews and Mark Schubski did a lot of work to really get this easement acquisition, land acquisition, uh, through as quickly as, as possible. And lastly, I would like to personally thank our engineer and staff, Jing Wen, who did an outstanding job not only designing, but writing the easements, the legal descriptions, and, uh, coordinating, uh, all this work. So, um, I will switch over to talk about our roadworks now. Um, we started off the road with our local road programs. I'd like to say that they started it, as soon as the, as soon as the governor's orders were lifted, we got out, started, uh, working and, um, we were able to accomplish, uh, five point eight million dollars of local road projects that are, were all completed this, this year and really wrapped, wrapped up mostly in, by October of this year. Um, we did sixteen full roads, fifteen sectional repairs, and covered, uh, almost six miles of local road improvement. Include many roads, but one of the major, main notable roads was Pond View between eighteen mile, eighteen mile road and nineteen mile road. Uh, if you happen to be in that area, um, that was a very high-traffic, um, really local road that, um, saw a really nice improvement. Um, we were also able to get our joint sealing program off. We joint sealed twenty-two roads, which is a program that we like to do to help preserve our roads in, in fair to good condition. Saw Road started in the summer as planned. Uh, we wrapped it up, um, I think towards the middle to end of October. That was a nine, one point nine miles of resurfacing. And we also completed about a thousand feet of sidewalk gap. So, uh, it was really a nice project for, uh, vehicles, but also completing that thousand feet of sidewalk gap, uh, any residential parcel now on east side of Shaner, uh, north of the river can now come down Saw Road, cross Clinton River Road, head west, and tie into our park system either by going down Shaner or going down Edison Court. So that was a complete streets-type project. Um, Utica Road between Hayes and Shaner was completed just a few weeks ago. That was a resurfacing project. That was, um, the last of our three-phase projects to address, uh, Utica Road. We started. So now we have, over the last three years, we've done Utica Road now from Hayes Road all the way up to Van Dyke. Eighteen mile road as well between Ryan and Dequinder was just finished and, um, probably within the last week. It was a resurfacing project that was a two-phase project to get eighteen mile road done between Dequinder Road and Mound Road. Um, we made some nice geometric improvements on eighteen mile road, uh, namely adding center turn lanes and, um, and, and completing the additional westbound lane from the Delia entrance towards Dequinder. Hayes Road between fourteen mile and Ravian, uh, was recently completed as well. Um, that was a resurfacing-type project, uh, that was through the county through, uh, that has, was federally funded. Uh, nineteen mile road from Shaner to Clint River Road was a complete reconstruct. Uh, we started that in July of this year. It was one point three miles and we just finished the roadway paving, uh, Sunday actually, so it was very good timing. Uh, there's some work that remains on the north side of the road, um, and that'll be wrapped up in the next, uh, two to three weeks, namely, uh, mostly water main work and some, uh, drive approaches and concrete work. Last but not least, Shaner Road, um, we weren't able to, uh, get it completed this year, but it was kicked off. Uh, so the curb was completed on the inside of the road, so the median curb was completed. Um, next year, we'll be able to come in and mill and fill, uh, the re, the rest of the pavement and complete the curb on the outside lanes. And there's also significant bridge work to be done with that project. Uh, there's four bridges, uh, that cross each bound across Clinton River and, uh, the Plum Brook drain. So those, we'll see, um, major work as well. So that work will all kick off in two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, but as from now, the barrels are pulled back and the road is open to full capacity. That highlights the two thousand and twenty work. Um, also, I'd like to note, um, that in two thousand and twenty, saw a significant amount of work behind the scenes on Innovate Mound Project, which will begin, uh, next summer. Uh, and the first section that we're going to tackle is from M fifty-nine, uh, to eighteen mile road. So, um, the work done behind the scenes, a lot of coordination with the businesses and the community. Uh, there was a public meeting, um, before, uh, COVID hit, we were able to have one in-person public meeting. Um, and then there's a, there was a couple of virtual meetings as well. Um, HNTB was hired by, by all of, uh, the governmental agencies to oversee the project and to manage the, manage the project. And they've done a good job pulling in, uh, the, the, um, businesses along the way. A lot of it was helping out, um, maybe of realigning drive approaches, uh, finding a better way to access their properties and things that we could do to improve not only the roadway and the roadway safety, but the parcels as well. So, um, there is a website, and I'm sure a lot of you are aware of it, innovate mound.org. That's innovate mound.org. Um, there's a really nice video. It's a little long. It's almost a half hour. But if you, uh, are interested, or if any residents are interested in the project, it's a, it's a great video to show what we're doing with, with the roadway and, uh, what the final product will be and highlight how, how we're gonna get there. Um, so also on that website, um, there's a way to make contact with the project team. Um, so you could go and leave a note on the website, or you, it'll tell you how to, who to call and how, um, the work's gonna be coordinated. So, uh, that's it for my road update, and thank you for your time.
Mayor, I just wanted to, uh, once again, uh, thank Ms., Mr. Baschaw and his team, and also a shout-out to our partners at the county who worked really hard to get their projects done, uh, in our city. You know, there were some minor glitches with, uh, Shaner starting out, but, uh, they worked hard. That was mainly at the state level. The county worked hard to try and get that project back on track, and we appreciate their hard work as well. And, uh, that concludes my report this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpool. Next item on our agenda tonight is the consent agenda, and we will be receiving comments on agenda items tonight. Uh, so all members of the public, uh, will be continued, will continue to be muted until called upon. Those on the phone that wish to participate on an agenda item may do so and will be recognized, uh, for comment. And if you wish to do so, please press nine on your phones. I'm sorry, please press star nine on your phone right now. So that's star nine. There are a couple callers on, this is for the consent agenda. If there's anyone who wants to speak on the consent agenda, press star nine. Okay, hearing or seeing none who would like to speak on the consent agenda, uh, council, we do need a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Mrs. Kosky, please proceed.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Mayor Taylor, Barb Zarco, support.
The motion to, uh, approve the consent agenda has been moved and supported. Ms. Riska, can we please have a roll call vote?
Mrs. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Saroski?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Yenaz?
Yes.
Mrs. Yerko?
Yes.
Mrs. Kosky?
Yes.
Mr. Radke?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Riska. Uh, motion carries seven zero. Next item on our agenda tonight is a consideration item. This is to consider a development agreement between the city of Sterling Heights and Clearview Homes LLC to facilitate the residential development of the former Warner Elementary School. We do have a presentation tonight from our city planner, Chris McLeod. Mr. McLeod, may proceed.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Share my screen here very quickly. Uh, so before you tonight is this, uh, potential development agreement between ourselves and Clearview Homes, uh, which as you know, would allow for the potential development of the former Warner Would allow for the potential development of the former Warner School, um the applicants. Uh approached us about the potential of going through Puffin Park. Uh to basically put a road through the very north end of Puffin Park to access the Warner School site. Um and that was going to be in exchange for or not to require them. Uh to go to the south, uh to go onto Coper Drive and put a road between two existing houses and you'll see that in one moment. Um so I'll go through some of the, some of the statistics of what we're gonna talk about here tonight and then show you some of the pictures. Uh for the road development itself, it's just over eleven thousand square feet of, of park area that would be converted from active park use. Uh to actual roadway, the road would obviously stay with the city, it'd be a public road. Um so we're not necessarily losing any property, we're just transforming how it's being utilized. Um as part of this overall development agreement, uh Clearview Homes has indicated that they are willing to transfer to the city. Uh just about, or just over a half acre of property at twenty-four thousand four hundred and seventy square feet. So in essence, a net gain of, of uh basically thirteen thousand three hundred and twenty-five, I mean so again, it's. But again, we're not technically losing any property whatsoever, but it's a transfer or an overall change or exchange in terms of how property is being utilized. In addition to that, they provided for additional funds, uh that would be slated for uh development of a pavilion as well as a play structure. Uh within the park, um and that would be consistent with uh the pavilion and play structures that the city has been implementing over the last. Several years as part of the recreate, recreating recreation program. They would also extend pathway extension to the south. From the current pathway system uh within Puffin Park down to Coper Drive. This would obviously provide a much desired connection to that subdivision to the south and to the neighborhood to the south. Uh to get into the overall uh park area itself. Uh and then from that, they would extend that pathway all the way up to the north end of Puffin Park. Ultimately and provide a cross connection into Nelson Park further to the north. Uh so that way they would be. Fully connected north to south through the development. Since uh we've last discussed this, uh the developer has also um. Willingly provided for the, a looping of the pathway within the park itself. Uh and we'll see that in one moment, um so a full pathway loop within the park will be provided. So anyway, these park improvements in the process will require a proposed development agreement that's in front of you tonight. The residential development itself is not approved at this particular time, it would still need to go through the planning commission for their review. So this kind of shows you the overall layout of, of where we're talking. Um Puffin Park uh along Viceroy there. Uh the old development site of, of Warner School, Nelson Park immediately to the south of fifteen. Kind of showing the existing layout, this is on the zoning map itself, this all, this property is all zone, single family residential, the proposed subdivision would be consistent with our, our sixty-one family residential district. This kind of shows you the aerial perspective, so the red arrow system there is kind of the proposed roadway. Again, on the north end of, of Puffin Park there. Um the ultimate road alignment kind of down to the bottom right-hand corner. Um you'll see a, a picture head-on that shows basically how tight that is between those two houses to put a city road through. And then obviously the, the squared area there is the Warner Development Site, which would ultimately become the subdivision development. Uh in terms of a single-family residential site condominium. This is that street view of where that road would go, in the two existing homes that would go between, this is the old driveway for the school site. So this is the access for Warner School. So technically, they would have the ability to come through here, uh propose a road through here. I don't think anyone desires that to occur. Um so this area is, as part of the development agreement would all be removed, uh would be basically uh. Stabilized with, with seed sod, as well as uh putting in uh the pathway system uh down here, which is a part of the ultimate connection for the development. Uh this is the proposal where the street would go, where the road would go all the way through here. Uh this is out the Viceroy, Viceroy is right at the bottom of the screen here, um it would simply go through the park, the north end of it. And then ultimately connect into the, into the parks or into the Warner School site. This is the conceptual layout again, not approved by planning commission at this particular time, has not even been seen by the planning commission yet. Uh but you can see the roadway alignment there. Which comes in from the east, uh enters the Warner School, uh provides a loop road. Uh thirty-six uh single-family residential homes, uh a small detention pad or stormwater facility to the south end of the site. And then you can see within Puffin Park itself, uh the conceptual layout of where these park improvements would go. Um again, a pavilion structure and the play structure that would be uh money granted to the city that's earmarked for that, the roadway itself. Uh and then the overall loop pathway system uh that is now being proposed, again, going all the way from Coper. Up through the park, looping around to the back end of those lots that are on the east side, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, there's a. Pathway shown there, it's probably pretty small on your screen, but that would provide a continuous loop through there. Uh so this development agreement will allow that all to occur. Part of this would ultimately require what's called a conversion uh through the state. And through the federal government, Kyle uh Langway or Parks and Rec Director is online as well, he can walk us through that if. There's any details on that and that the council wants to dive into. Uh but it's gonna be a somewhat lengthy process to do with appraisals and approvals through the different authorities. Uh but this is really kind of the first phase to make sure that uh city council is, is in agreement with this. Um and then ultimately, if that's the case, uh then it would start down that line of, of additional approvals that are necessary at different levels. Uh so with that, um again, myself, uh I'm here to answer questions, Kyle is here to answer questions and. Uh Jerry Griffith from uh Clearview Homes, I believe, just entered the meeting, uh so uh he is here as well if there's any questions of him.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. McLeod. If there is anyone on the phone right now who wishes to uh address council on this item, please press star nine. Okay, seeing that uh no one uh from the audience wants to speak on this item, council, we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Schmidt?
Resolve to approve the development agreement between the city of Sterling Heights and Clearview Homes LLC. And authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign all documents required in conjunction with this approval.
Is there a second?
Second, Mayor Taylor, Henry Yanez, second.
Thank you, Mr. Yanez, it's been moved and supported, uh Councilwoman Schmidt, any discussion?
I do have just a couple of things, Mayor. Uh through the chair to Mr. McLeod, you could probably answer this. Um it being a site condo um development, will those streets be deeded to the city to maintain because. We'll essentially be maintaining that little piece of road?
Mr. McLeod?
Uh that is correct, all the streets, uh including the one through the park as well as the site condominium will all be public roadway, so. Uh maintained and, and transferred over to the city for, for our long-term maintenance.
Okay, um great, I, I think this is a win-win for the city and the developer, actually. Um I love the idea of um them funding a playground and a pavilion on the south side of fifteen mile. We all know fifteen mile to cross over into Nelson Park can be kind of challenging. Um so it gives this um neighborhood the opportunity to not have to cross fifteen mile to get to a playground. And uh I think uh it's, it's a wonderful idea and I just hope that uh the, the next step of the process is successful. I have nothing further, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Schmidt, council, anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Kosky?
Through the chair to Mr. McLeod, retention found at the south end of the project, will that need to be fenced in?
Mr. McLeod?
There's a chance it will be, uh depending on how it's designed, um and whether it's designed to hold water or not. Again, it'll ultimately design up, or it'll ultimately depend on the, the design of it itself. So if there's standing water slopes aren't uh appropriate, those kinds of things, then the fence would uh be necessary. But if it's designed as more of a dry pond and, and something of that nature, then at that point. Fence may be negated, uh again, if it's not going to be a hazard. But by all means, it will go through full engineering review and meet all of our city specifications uh for a stormwater facility.
Thank you, one other question um to uh Mr. Langus, um Kyle, when you um. Applied for the approval to do this transfer. Have you ever done anything like this before?
Yeah, excuse me, thank you, uh we do have minimal number of conversions uh on our park properties. Uh most notably, there are cell phone towers, we have one just to the northwest in Nelson Park South. Um but those are the most recent conversions that we've done. Our goal is always to, you know, preserve our park property for use as, as a park as much as possible. Uh except when these situations come up where there's a clear benefit to our residents and the city. Uh we, it provides for an opportunity to go through the conversion process, um to make certain that we can provide these. Facilities to our residents.
I seem to recall that we did something similar to this and I want to say Avis Park. With a project that was done up there, that would be. Dequinder um fourteen mile area. The southwest quadrant up there.
I'm unfamiliar with the conversion uh there, um the, the only conversion that, again, that we have is the. Uh the cell phone tower um in Nelson Park uh from doing our, our conversion reports uh every five years with the DNR. Uh Avis Park does not have one attached to it.
Well, the point I'm making is I don't think that it should be a problem because it seems like we're getting more property there and it's for the betterment of. Uh the residents, so. I wish you good luck on that, I think you're gonna do just fine, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kosky, Mr. Radkey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh through the chair to uh Mr. McLeod. Um we talked about this in closed session, just to see about the property. Will the developer be providing streetlights on the newly paved road through Puffin Park?
Mr. McLeod?
Uh we have not broached that subject yet with the developer, um we could broach that with them as part of the site plan and view process. Um and speaking with the engineer on a separate issue with street lighting. It's not common practice to have a streetlight um at a non-major intersection, if you will. So but that is definitely something I, I know that we discussed that, um that was a concern and that's definitely something we can raise with the developer.
Well, I, my concern is, I, I think this is a great project, I think it gives us more property than we started with and it also. Benefits the people from the south so they can get, get into the park. But because that roadway is a straight shot roadway between the, is a Viceroy on the far side? And them over there, I'm afraid that at night in a park with no lighting, that situation that could, that could definitely go bad. So I'd like to have lighting there, especially at night, if kids are playing, if people are messing around in the park, whatever. I just want to make sure no one's slurring down that street and running over a child, that's my, my greatest concern. So that, that's why I would hope the developer would put in at least a street light at one end of the street and one at the, at the other, just to make sure nothing. Happens because, you know, kids play in the park even after dark, you know, they're not supposed to. I'd hate to see something uh negative happen there, other than that, I think this project is excellent, I think it's uh. We're getting more park and we're getting a better park and I'm excited about the pathway and really activating this park, which was kind of. For various reasons, not included in the recreating recreation proposal. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Radkey, anyone else, council? Seeing nobody, uh I do want to just uh commend uh the Parks and Rec Department and our city planner. For uh working with Clearview Homes and commend them, th- this is actually a very clever. Uh solution to what could have been a problem that might have made it impossible to develop that area, but. I think the city's ending up way ahead here and uh it's, it's truly a win-win, so we're really excited about it. And um, you know, it's gonna, like Mike said, uh Councilman Radkey, activate that park. Which has been underutilized and um so I'm all in support of it. With that, Ms. Riska, could we please have a roll call vote?
Mrs. Saroski?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Yanez?
Yes.
Mrs. Yerko?
Yes.
Mrs. Kosky?
Yes.
Mr. Radkey?
Yes.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Yes.
All right, motion passes seven zero. Move on to the next item on our agenda tonight, which is to consider a request to transfer ownership of an escrow. Two thousand eighteen Class C liquor license with Sunday sales, PM permit and dance entertainment permit. From John Johns Incorporated to Zara Property Management LLC and transfer location from twenty-eight oh thirty-nine Mound. Warren, Michigan to two-seven-one-five East fourteen mile road, Sterling Heights, Michigan. Is there anyone in the uh audience, I do see a hand is raised, I believe that's Mr. Rogeri, uh so I'm gonna. Bear with me, uh Mr. Rogeri, I'm gonna try to get you unmuted here. Okay, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hello?
Yes, we have you, Phil.
Oh, good, oh, good evening, uh Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh thank you for the opportunity to speak, uh there's been a nice layout of the uh. In your packet of the presentation, I don't want to reiterate the same thing that's in there. Just want to state that this petitioner is a, a good member of our community, he owns the Tazza. Uh banquet uh center on uh fifteen mile between Dequinder and Ryan. He's got vast experience uh in restaurant management. And he last month received special uh land use approval from our planning commission to continue with the restaurant uh in this particular zoning. Um this, this uh transfer will not impact any quotas that we have in the city of Sterling Heights. Uh the employees, there'll be eight employees right from the local area, there'll all be tips qualified. And it's gonna be a very nice uh addition to our community, especially in view of the pandemic where a lot of restaurants are actually closing. We have to admire and uh the encouragement of this gentleman to proceed with a brand-new restaurant. Of this nature in today's tough times, but other than that, uh if you have any questions, uh please uh, you know, ask me, I'll try to answer them. But I think the application and the agenda statement by our city clerk and the backup staff report pretty much spells it all out, thank you for your consideration.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Rogeri, I'm gonna put you back on mute for now and if we have any questions, we'll come back to you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else on the Zoom call tonight that would like to comment on this item, if so, please press star nine now. Okay, seeing none, council, we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Saroski?
Resolve to the request to transfer ownership of an escrowed twenty eighteen Class C liquor license. With Sunday sales, PM permit and dance entertainment permit. From John Johns Incorporated to Zara Property Management LLC. And transfer location from twenty-eight oh thirty-nine Mound, Warren, Michigan. To twenty-seven fifteen East fourteen mile Sterling Heights be considered for approval. Provided, however, that this action shall not be considered. As a local government approval of a topless activity permit for the new location.
Been moved, council, is there a second?
Support, Mr. Mayor.
It's been moved and supported, uh thank you, Ms. Saroski, any comment?
Uh just very briefly, and it is uh through the chair to Mr. Rogeri if possible, please, Mr. Rogeri, are you still there?
He is.
But he might be still muted.
I'm gonna ask him to unmute, I'm not entirely sure how you unmute yourself on the phone. But he was able to do it last time, Mr. Rogeri.
Okay, I'm here.
Hey, okay, hello, Mr. Rogeri, so just wanted to clarify. Hi, good, Mr. Rogeri, glad to hear your voice, um so I just wanted to reiterate, yes, thank you. Reiterate for the residents that this, although this is a transfer. Of a liquor license from John Johns, which was actually a. Uh establishment in Warren, not in Sterling Heights, and we are not going to continue with that. Adult dancing portion of that permit, correct?
Uh that is correct, Mrs. Saroski, that is being uh removed from the application and uh approval process.
Great, and that, that was my biggest concern when I first saw this and other than that, I am happy to allow that, this license to transfer. And to uh wish the best of luck to Zara Properties because this is not the best time you, in, in most. At least acknowledged in most circles, not the best time to start up a restaurant, so, or to start up something different with their restaurant, so hopefully. This will go well for them and we, I wish them the best of luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Saroski, uh council, anyone else on this item? Mrs. Kosky?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through the chair to Mr. Rogeri, just to clarify something. Uh the liquor license. Uh, the liquor license is going to go with the restaurant there on Fourteen Mile Road. But they have a banquet center on fifteen, does that have a separate liquor license? Or will that license be used for both locations?
Uh, uh, thank you, Mrs. Kosky, no, the, uh, Taza banquet facility located on Fourteen Mile Road has its own separate. Uh, uh, Class C liquor license, and that was transferred directly to that establishment in two thousand and fifteen by our city. I, I handled the original license, uh, from the original owner, and no, it has nothing to do with the site whatsoever. Two separate entities, two separate licenses, and they're mu- they're mutually exclusive from one another.
Were you mentioning something about banquet facility on Fifteen Mile Road, was that just a, uh, I mean fourteen?
Uh, i- it's on Fifteen Mile Road, no, I, I think, uh, Taza. Let me see here.
You confused me, that's why I'm asking.
Two, two separate locations, right, two separate.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're totally two separate locations, and, yeah, two separate styles of restaurant. They're, they're not anywhere, uh, similar. And the banquet facility is, it's not a large facility, it's a small, uh, restaurant that has small rooms for. If someone wants a small little, uh, uh, family get-together, that would be the Taza, but this has got nothing to do with, uh, Taza.
Okay, so the banquet facility is separate, it's on Fourteen Mile Road, the restaurant is separate and it also is on Fourteen Mile Road.
Uh, yes, I believe, um, I, I could have swore it was on fifteen, but I guess it's, uh. Um, Fourteen Mile, according to the records before me, but they're, they, they have nothing to do with each other.
Okay, that's, uh, they're separate, that's all I wanted to know, thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Kosky, uh, counsel, anyone else on this item?
Mayor Taylor. Um, through the chair to Mr. Rogeri, the only question I have for you is, um, has this, uh, transfer already been approved by the state?
Uh, yes, it has.
So this is just our formality of letting people know what's happening, okay, that's my only question, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zarco.
Thank you, Ms. Zarco, counsel, anyone else on this item? If not, I will say, uh, thank you for the presentation tonight, Mr. Rogeri, uh, we've seen through the backup material that. Uh, there is no reason, uh, to deny this requ- oh, Mr. Yanez, you've unmuted, do you have any comment, or are you just in preparation? Uh, I, it's my fault, okay.
It's just waiting to vote.
All right, so we are, uh, we, we have no reason to deny this, uh, clean record for this, uh, for this petitioner. So we're always happy to see new businesses and restaurants opening up in Sterling Heights, so I will enthusiastically support it. With that, counsel, uh, I'm sorry, Ms. Riska, can we please have a roll call?
Mayor Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Yanez.
Yes.
Mrs. Yerko.
Yes.
Mrs. Kosky.
Yes.
Mr. Radke.
Yes.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero, uh, thank you, Mr. Rogeri, and good luck to the petitioner. Next item on our agenda tonight is to consider nominations to the city of Sterling Heights Boards and Commissions. Is there anyone on the call right now who would like to, uh, speak on this item, if so, please press star nine? Seeing none, uh, counsel, uh. We have, so we have three boards, I believe we have four appointments, first is the Board of Ordinance Appeals, two alternates. Two openings, these are city council appointments to terms ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Is there anyone who would like to, uh, make a nomination to the Board of Ordinance Appeals to alternate positions? See none, I'll pass on that briefly and go to the Board of Review. Anyone with a nomination to the Board of Review? See none, I'll pass on that, and we'll go to the Zoning Board of Appeals, alternate position, one position, anyone have a nomination for this board? If not. I would entertain. I would entertain a motion to, uh, postpone these three items to the January fifth, twenty twenty-one City Council Meeting.
Mayor Taylor, Bart Zarco, um, at, so moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported with no discussion, Ms. Riska, can we please have a roll call vote?
Mr. Yanez.
Yes.
Mrs. Yerko.
Yes.
Mrs. Kosky.
Yes.
Mr. Radke.
Yes.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Yes.
And Mayor Taylor.
Yes, uh, motion carries seven zero. Move on to the next item on our agenda, which is. To consider appointments to the city of Sterling Heights Boards and Commissions. Is there anyone on the call who would like to participate or speak on this item? Plus, press star nine, please, if you would, okay, seeing none, we have. Three commissions, four appointments, uh, to make here, the first being the Housing Commission. And, uh, they, these are all, uh, reappointment requests. The appointment power lies with the City Council, is there a council member who'd like to make a motion to appoint to the Housing Commission?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Resolve to appoint Cory Venidas to the Housing Commission to a term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, subject to the appointee. Meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter four point oh three and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, is there any discussion, counsel? No discussion, Ms. Riska, can we please have a roll call vote?
Mrs. Yerko.
Yes.
Mrs. Kosky.
Yes.
Mr. Radke.
Yes.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Yes.
Mayor Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Yanez.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next is the Water System Advisory Committee, two appointments to terms ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Believe we should be able to take both of these at the same time, if a council member would like to make those appointments.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Resolve to appoint Richard Glitz and Joseph Ni- Nieman to the Water System Advisory Committee. To a term, both terms ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Subject to the appointees, meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter subset four point oh three, and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
It's been moved, is there a second, seconded by Councilwoman Schmidt, is there any discussion, counsel?
No, thank you.
With no discussion, Ms. Riska, can we please have a roll call vote?
Mrs. Kosky.
Yes.
Mr. Radke.
Yes.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Yes.
Mayor Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Yanez.
Yes.
Mrs. Yerko.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries seven zero, next is the zoning boards, zoning board of appeals, alternate position. This is a city council appointment to a term ending June thirty, twenty twenty-three, counsel, who'd like to make that appointment?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco.
Resolve to appoint John Fenn to the Zoning Board of Appeals, alternate to a term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Subject to the appointee, meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter four point zero three and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support. Support.
Been moved and supported, is there any discussion, counsel? With no discussion, Ms. Riska, can we please have a roll call vote?
Mr. Radke.
Yes.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Yes.
Mayor Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Yanez.
Yes.
Mrs. Yerko.
Yes.
Mrs. Kosky.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries seven zero, that concludes that portion of our agenda tonight, and we'll move on. To communications from citizens, and seeing that there is not a single citizen on the Zoom call. Think we can, well, let me just double check. But it seems that everybody's dropped off, so we can move past that item. And, uh, move on to reports from city administration, Mr. Vanderpool, anything for tonight?
Nothing further, Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Kaschukski, anything for tonight?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thanks.
Okay, counsel, I'll open it up for any reports or new business or unfinished business.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor, for those residents that were not able to see, we did light our Christmas tree, did our virtual tree lighting. Quite an interesting way to manage to do that in an, in a pandemic time. Santa did come and take the, was awarded the key to the city, so we are ready to start our Christmas season, so from. Some, the residents who are watching this meeting who did not see the tree lighting, I want to wish them a very happy holiday season for however you celebrate the holidays. Merry Christmas from my family to yours, and we do have one more meeting before Christmas, but I did want to at least start off the season by wishing you well. Thank you very much, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Sarowski, anyone else, counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to echo, uh, uh, Mayor Potem Sarowski's comments, uh, happy holidays, merry Christmas from my family to yours. Um, I just wanted to stress everyone at home that we've gone virtual as a city council because we are trying to protect and value the health of everyone. That gets involved with the city, and this is not our preferred method of talking to you or interacting with you, but. It's what the government's requiring and it's, it's what we're following at City Hall, so I ask everyone to hopefully, so we can not have this for very long, to wear a mask. Socially distanced and to be safe, because watching the news, deaths arising, cases arising. You know, we have a vaccine, but it's not ready yet, so we have to get from here to there, and I hope that we can get through this. Traditionally dark season together to make sure that we'll all be safe in the long run. So please bear with us, I know it's not our preferred way to interact with the residents, but we are doing our best to keep you and our families safe. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Radke, anyone else on council with a report tonight? Okay, if not, I would just, uh, say thank you again, oh, Ms. Zarco, go ahead.
Oh, no, I'm just getting ready to, um.
Okay.
In the meeting.
Yeah, I'm, I'll be brief, uh, brief, I was just going to say, uh, thank you to the public for, uh, you know, extending the courtesy to us that we are meeting. Uh, virtually again, uh, we're gonna meet virtually next meeting as well, and I think the plan going forward beyond that has not been finalized. But we are going to base our decision on, uh, what the, uh, what the science says. And what's best for our public and what's best for our city employees, you know, these meetings. Do require a fair number of city employees to be involved to, to run them, whether it's virtual or in person, so we just want to make sure that we keep everybody safe. And we'll follow the guidelines set by the governor and the Department of Health and Human Services, so. Stay tuned for, uh, meetings beyond the, uh, next meeting, which will be December fifteenth and will be virtual, so. With that, I want to wish you all a, uh, very happy holidays and, uh, everyone stay safe. And, uh, keep yourself protected, it's getting bad out there again, and, uh, we want everybody to do their part to help stop the spread of this virus, so. Counsel, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Bart Zarco.
Support.
Is there a second, it's been moved and supported, Ms. Riska, can we please have a roll call vote?
Mrs. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Yes.
Mayor Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Yanez.
Yes.
Mrs. Yerko.
Yes.
Mrs. Kosky.
Yes.
And Mr. Radke.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero, this meeting is adjourned, thank you, everyone, for participating.